Call this meeting to order at 7:06 PM. This is the regular meeting of the governing body of the borough of Bloomingdale, Tuesday, August 16th. I ask if anyone would first rise to salute our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the government of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, every nation has its own.
Roll call.
Mayor Don Lee.
Here.
Councilwoman Chris Landermark.
Councilwoman.
Costa.
Here.
Del Ripa.
Here.
DeMotta.
Here.
Hudson. Councilman Yasi, your excuse this evening?
And you also with us are our attorney, John Self. This is official meeting of the governing body of the borough of Bloomingdale. On November 28, 2015, and amended March 1, 2016, the date time of place of this official meeting was faxed and mailed all over the media post here. I don't even know the executive. There are two non-agenda items. The first is requesting authorization to advertise for interviews of DBW employees to replace Fred Cook, who will look for a higher day than fall. And two, resignation of Ellen Gerber from the Environmental Commission. Those are the two non-agenda items that we will act on this evening. Early public comment. I need a motion to open early public comment.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to an agenda item? The bear hunt is a separate item. We'll have a public hearing for it, so you can speak during that period of time. Anything else? Anyone else? See, no motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're four, Steve. Do you have any course?
Nothing at this stage.
Dawn, do you have any course?
Nothing this evening, no.
Thank you. Any council? Just would like to remind everybody, Mr. Mayor, that on this weekend, we're having very wonderful cleanup with the environmental commission will host. We've got about 30 people attending, so we'd love for that to be a good thing. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Just add that, Tony, with the car department, we'll be sending people also down there to help out.
Great, thank you. Good. They could, as VP, or just give me a head cap with his stuff.
Uh, we depend on that.
Okay. Just make sure we have it on lunch. I'm sorry, John, how many people?
We're good.
She's only 30. I work for 40, so. Anyone else?
Uh, John, do you want to just briefly talk about the 5K or anything? Because our next meeting's not September 11th.
September 6th.
September 6th, the annual, this is our fourth, I believe, fourth annual Bob Costa 5K, and also Car Night the night before, which anybody who's walking and bringing an antique car, any type of car, motorcycles, we'll have it at the Waltz City Bourbon School, which is starting at 5:00 to 10:00. And we'll have food and a DJ there. And the 5K will be the following day. And the registration pages are now open for people that want to register for the 5K. And then, hopefully, it's as successful as it's been for the past three years. It's a great event. And at this point, we've raised over $45,000. And we donate, I should say, we donate over $45,000 to the Los Garner Foundation, in Bob's name. So it's a great event.
Thank you. I guess the garden is on the agenda, so we can speak to details on that. Not the agenda, but the grant.
Oh.
Well, tell me the agenda, so we'll take it from that part.
Sure.
Just a quick updates. We suffered quite a bit of flooding damage on the age storming out a few weeks ago. So on tonight's agenda is an amendment of the bond ordinance to do survey repairs, particularly on Catherine, Elizabeth, Clark Street, a couple other spots. The work that's going to be done are just cleaning pipes. For example, Catherine Street, we have an estimate of $18,000 just to clear Catherine's 24-inch drainage line because it's completely clogged with the storm and the degree that washed into the runoff. Some other lines as well, some Star Lake drainage. So a lot of issues. So we saw places flood that didn't even flood my reading. And it was over 100-year storm. Some window of the rain was over 200-year storm. We saw five inches in a two-hour period. So a lot of the work is just the riprap where earth was washed away, that kind of item. But Catherine Street took probably the biggest hit, and part of it was the installation of a couple of new basins, drainage basins, and a little lead gate. Another lead gauge storm, hopefully, the future flooding best we can. Fire staff is coming along, as you can see the work's been there a few weeks. Obviously, everything's going along well, but projects are staying, dealing with 100-year-old sewer and water lines, which is exactly what happened. But we're getting there, almost ready to pave side lumps or three-quarters done. It's coming along quite well. Star Lake sort of got slowed because of that project, same contractors doing both, but they're ready to rock and roll. And we can foresee no change on revap. As you know, we accept the bids. We cannot award the bids due to Governor Christie's freeze on any funded transportation trust fund projects. And rev is one of those. So we're saying now it might not be until the fall, and they release the K, continue on those projects.
Um, hi, Mayor. With the projects, the road projects going on, the social media, people were very appreciative of our update, especially of Star Lake, that the project was starting. Is, I don't know if there's some way that we can continue that with all of our projects? I don't know.
Yeah.
We thought, just because we got such a good response from Star Lake, that I think it's something that we should continue to do.
Right. The residents in the project area are notified by the contractor, the male stuff, the, uh, not a door, and elected. Yes, I agree. Well, I get that information tightly enough from our engineer. We can send it to you post, or you get it right from the utility guys. So we will. We'll leave them a better, stronger conscience that we should do more of that, because they did see the responses and the show of appreciation for the situation. The final item I have is the Waltz City Bourbon Drainage Project is 99% complete. There is some additional sod they want to cut down where we tried to see not so much disturbed area, it was a perimeter area, and a little bit of overwater in about 40 square feet that caused some sod to rot, root rot, because of so much rain on top of so much water we were applying to. But we haven't seen it. It looks outstanding. And we're going to start using it in the next few weeks. So that's all I have at this time. So anyone else? Moving along, I need a motion for the consent agenda. As you can see on there is the candlelight walk for 9/11. This is the 15th year, correct? Okay. Of the event. Right? And what we're doing, because Butler has installed their own lining it this year, we will be gathering at Slough Park and having our candlelight vigil from Slough Park to Butler Park. Our nation's home.
I'm sorry. The two resolutions on it will be 8.1 and 8.2.
The resolutions are 8.1 and 8.2 for Senior Citizen Week and our Drives Over, Get Over campaign. Senior Citizen Week, Chairman of the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee and members, is an event sponsored by the county freeholders. And the services they offer are quite impressive all year round, but particularly in this particular week, they just provide really good discount programs throughout the county. And all information's on the website, posted on county website. And Rich, I don't know if they send it to you for our website. It's kind of detailed, so if I have it, I will. A lot of the services are mainly Westmilkford, Clifton area, Thunder Rigwood, discounted areas, and retail stores on top of the normal senior programs that we offer all our seniors in town. So that's the resolution to support. So I had a second on that. Sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pending, this is the second final reading on public ordinance 19-2016, ban hunting on municipal recreation land. Can I open up those statements, please?
Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in this building, published in the Herald News, clocked and mailed to the public, and a motion may be made that it be read by time.
Who makes that motion, please? Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to have it. The Normans of the borough of Bloomingdale County said in New Jersey, amending Chapter 8 Parks and Recreation, Section 8-1, prohibited access to the Borough Code to ban hunting on municipal-owned recreation land.
Thank you, Jane. Now I need a motion for a public hearing. To move. All in favor? Anyone wishing to speak to ordinance 19-2016, please come on up, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Olene Don, 28 South Road, Bloomingdale, New Jersey. I just want to thank you for the work, because I love it. And I hope that this is forwarded in.
Wonderful. And I do. All right. Thank you for all you do. Anyone else, please? See, no one. A motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All in favor? And who moves to adopt?
Somebody. Second.
Any further discussion? I thank the council for support. I thank you ladies for your work as well. And a roll call, please.
Councilwoman Costa.
Yes.
DeMotta.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes. Sondemire.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So it is passed. Moving along, new business. I make a motion to table the name of the bill's last executive session. There may be some discussion that could involve personnel, so I'd rather go to executive and then come back out. Who makes that motion, please?
Somebody.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, adoption of resolution 2016 8.3, promotion of Jane Wenzel, the animal shelter, to animal shelter manager. As you know, we had one of our members resign due to obtaining another ability to teaching job. So the recommendation of our ACO is to increase the position, so it goes from $12,000 to $14,000 an hour for Jane Wenzel to be a shelter manager. So there's actually presence managing the shelter to, again, give Lisa, our ACO, more time to be waiting in the shelter and do ACO work. So who makes that motion, please?
Somebody.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call. Sorry.
Do we have a man required to?
No. No. It was just all part-time employees remaining the position.
Send them funds?
Yeah. Yeah, because we lost that one. Wouldn't be on there unless you... Roll call.
Councilwoman DeMotta.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes. Sondemire.
Yes. The next item is adoption of resolution 2016 8.4, supporting Governor, Governor's Fairness Formula for Funding, School Funding and Property Tax Equity. Now, although the governor will have a real uphill battle getting this to ever become law, I'm asking the governing body to support the resolution. And what this is, and I won't read it entirely to the record, but simply what it's about. As everyone's aware, we have what are called Abbott districts. And Abbott districts tend to be schooled in the inner cities, and they make up 5% of the public school districts. And they receive immensely more per pupil state aid than any other district statewide. And governors proposing a solution to New Jersey's true most pressing crisis is hurting residents, failure of our administration in property taxes. The governor's fairness formula is equal per pupil funding that would provide tax fairness for all residents and better helping education everywhere. So the bottom line is, the goal is to, to spread the current state aid that we get fairly per pupil throughout the state. And the calculations, it's a great website. It's NJ.gov/governor/taxrelief. And if you go to that website, there's a tool that allows you to check any municipality and the savings that there would be in property taxes if this was to become law. And Bloomingdale's annual savings is $1,300 per home on average, or remember, that's your average assessed home. So, you know, many residents could see double that if we were to see more state aid due to the fairness formula. Again, uphill battle, because, you know, you need assembly and senate support, and, you know, it's going to be tough. Not many politicians are going to want to... This will, this will make, you know, certain districts happy and to make other inner-city districts like Camden, Jersey City, and the like unhappy. So it should be interesting if it gets motion and legs to go, but I'm asking to be supported. So do I have a motion, please?
Somebody.
Second. Any further discussion?
And I just wanted to touch more on that.
Yes, please.
Just because, I mean, I know with the Abbott districts, there, you know, there's a big argument. I don't really think that an entirely flat rate is entirely fair based on various economics. But I don't think, like you said, it's ever going to come, you know, get voted through the way it is. And I certainly, and I'm going to vote yes for it, because I want the discussion to go forward and actually come to some sort of thing, because the current formula is not working quite plainly here. You know, we haven't seen state aid for education increase in several years, and, you know, obviously, things keep increasing, so something needs to change. And I hope this is the catalyst for, for achieving that change, whatever it winds up being.
Good. Appreciate that. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Next item is a adoption for resolution 2016 8.5. This is a resolution for climate change, regarding climate change, that we received... And it's simply a resolution asking, stating that whereas our climate is rapidly changing, leaving New Jersey families and businesses vulnerable to impacts of more frequency of your storms, whereas our borough is extremely vulnerable to the effects of extreme weather events, as we all know from the past, and our community is deeply concerned by the adverse impacts of climate change. Extreme weather events resulted in hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of damage in Bloomingdale the past decade. Bloomingdale has taken serious steps to reduce pollution in our borders and significantly steps to reduce greenhouse emissions and, you know, remain green. So we're just asking that, don't remind me, resolve to commit to increase renewable energy where we can. You know, city lights, which we do regularly on our utilities and the like, commit to look at purchasing energy from renewables, such as solar, et cetera. Just make a commitment due to the seriousness of our climate change. And that's what this resolution is asking of the governing body of the borough. So do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Any further discussion?
We're still, my understanding is that we're still rather limited in our ability to do solar-based things, because of our use of municipal utility grid.
Correct. We're limited, correct, because of, oh, no, we're limited to getting electric elsewhere due to the...
Right, that's not electric.
We could, and I know Councilman Brew, actually, he served 10 years ago as a real component of solar energy. And I know it was an issue here, it was like to put on a roof, the borough roof couldn't handle it. We'd have to spend a quarter million dollars to fix the roof before it could even, it just was never financially feasible to do it. But it's something we should look at, whether you look at, you know, smaller buildings and construction offices, stuff, things like that. Things you should explore isn't just that.
Even I know when I was on the Board of Ed, part of our, because we wound up in the same thing, where you had to pay, you know, $700,000 to fix a roof to get a million dollars back to it. But, you know, some of the things, you know, some places have like solar panels, like, you know, in the parking lots and stuff like that, that I think has worked well in a different place.
Yeah, these are explored, but it all was down to, you know, being cost-effective.
Exactly.
I supported it. I just saw a good article about solar energy where, you know, it's never really entirely taken off nationwide, speaking of the West, due to it's not quite cost-effective, the cost of the infrastructure to start. And for a municipality, always good spending and stuff to do. So, but yeah, this is an acknowledgement of it by the borough, so. Any further discussion? All in favor, please?
Aye.
Nick? I'm sorry? Yeah. Next item, resolution 2016 8.6, declaring July 30, 2016, storm as an emergency, which caused damage due to floods. So simply what we're doing here is declaring that event as an emergency, which allows the borough to take action this year to deal with any repairs that result in financial costs for the borough. Who makes that motion, please?
Somebody.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is asking for support of resolution 2016 8.7, renewal of New Jersey Municipal Employees' Benefit Fund. This is our health insurance, where we get our health insurance through the HIF Health Insurance Fund of Morris County, and our renewal is coming up. And we are just acknowledging by a resolution that we will be renewing through the HIF versus where we were previously, a much higher rate with the state health plan. Who makes that motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next resolution is 8.8, which is the renewal of our Morris County JIP, or Joint Insurance Fund, which is for our property, our liability, and our workers' comp insurance. Again, renewal time, we're, the party said resolution showing your interest in renewal. So who makes that motion, please?
Somebody.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next is 8.8, this is, I'm sorry, 8.9. This is our 2017 Municipal Alliance Grant, which is our Drug and Alcohol Awareness Program that Mrs. Cindy Harper runs very well for our borough, bringing education programs to the youth of our community. And this is a resolution that's supported that and applying for 2017 fund. I believe it averages, what, like $17,000 a year, $80,000 a year. We don't know yet to bring programs, which she does a great job with. Who makes that motion, please?
Somebody.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please?
Aye.
The next item is resolution 8.10. This is the Chapter 159, amending the current budget for funds from the, I'm sorry, lost my page, from the municipal alliance. And anytime we amend your budget, we need to do a Chapter 159, and just trying to find the dollar on, which again is resolution 2016 1.0, in the amount of $16,792 for fiscal year 2017. And who makes that motion, please?
Somebody.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes. Sondemire.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMotta.
Yes. Thank you. NJ is resolution 8.11, amendment to our personnel manual in regards to sick time for state statute NJ SA 48,9-10.2. Simply what we're doing here, okay, what we're doing here, and this came out...
I'm sorry, you said this is not in our...
It's not in the book. I'll explain it, but it's just fixing, amending the employee personal manual. As you know, our employees, for a long time in Bloomingdale, are entitled to accumulate sick time, but we cap, and, you know, some of these companies don't cap it. You always hear those stories about employees getting, you know, a million dollars when they retire and all that. In our borough, we cap it. Right now, the most employee can get is 90 days. And that averages, for the average employee, about $40,000, $45,000 by out of retirement. In 2010, legislation was passed to cap that at $15,000 for employees hired after 2010. So it's the law. It applies, it does say it in the white collar contract we just negotiated, and when the police and DPW contract comes up, well, that's the language, the law trumps whether it's there or not, and we really don't have employees hired after 2010. We'll be retiring, which will be down to the next contract in two years. So from just the housekeeping and amending policy manual that an employee hired after 2010, the most they can accumulate is $15,000 via sick time. So who makes that motion, please? Somebody.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is acknowledging a grant for the Dig In program. For $2,500, you see our huge check out front posted on our easel for the borough's community garden. And I will turn the microphone over to Councilwoman Hudson to speak to how well this is coming along.
It's coming along, girl.
Thank you. Next.
So, we've had, we've had a couple of issues with rain. And clearly, when you get almost eight inches of rain...
Close, close.
I know. But it's actually really, really long, very well. The fence is going in, we've got our water done, sprinkler system's going in, we got a very generous donation from a resident, and then we now have our grant. And, you know, I can't tell you how excited I am for the spring, because the spring means we're going to be planting. And, you know, we would also really like this to become a community event, where we have community events at the garden. This entire project would not have been possible if not for the Boy Scouts, specifically Chris and Spencer Winkler, who worked tirelessly on the grant application for Dig In.
As an Eagle Scout project.
As an Eagle Scout project. And then as, also part of the Eagle Scout project, they put the pathway in, and they're going to be building a shed from scratch, which is, you know, fantastic. It would also not have been possible without our, our water department and our DPW, who have really been pitching it a lot. And I, John, I can't thank you guys enough. I mean, you know, it, I think it's really going to be a wonderful thing for this community. And, you know, it really starts the discussion and the learning process about growing healthy food and, you know, leading healthy lives. And I, I think it's a wonderful way to start. I can't wait.
Yes, and, and obviously, thank you goes to Dawn. You know, we had, we had talked about a few years ago, Tony, Environmental Commission, and just feeling somebody's couldn't pinpoint my hand, and, I don't know, it just got quiet. Then we had a business owner approach us, the owner of Griswold Home Healthcare down on Main Street, who is a big advocate of eating healthy and growing organic and the like. So it kind of rekindled the idea, and the site is behind the senior center, and, you know, looking forward to it. And the fence is 90% up, the sprinkler system's in, we did have his, his, Dawn alluded to was the washout, but still, I've generously donated a ton of brick redstone to prevent the, that washout. And so moving on. So, but the grant, granted by Boy Scouts for us, is through...
The Dig In program.
City Green, which is a nonprofit whose mission is building community gardens throughout the county. And we are now, I think there's, I think there's one in just about every minute spell in the hour.
Yeah, there's not.
Okay. Headed in 10 of 16, 11 of 16.
11 out of 16.
And the county partners with them and gives many grants, and that's what we provide for and successfully obtained. So thank you, Dawn.
And our freeholders, thank you.
And our freeholders, certainly. So it's good today, we're moving along on that, so it's going to be good. At one point, we'll put out advertisements that are going to be limited on space, and first come, first served. I think it charges $25 for a plot, so people can have a plot, and all those details will come. Okay. The next item is introduction of bond ordinance, I'm sorry, 23-2016, amending bond ordinance 14-2016, various capital improvements. So we are amending an existing bond to reallocate $95,000 for the recent flooding issues, and I'm still working on the goals with our engineer for various work to be done. Like I said, cleaning lines, riprap, rebuilding hills, and storm drains and the like. And anyone wishes to see these sites, which I have and can show you, I think Councilman Masters really related to damage, and we suffered that evening, I'd be more than welcome to walk you about. But we will begin, depending on emergency, we'll, as our engineer, begin, authorize the work to be done. When funds are available, this ordinance obviously needs to be second final reading, and then 20 days from that point. So money really wouldn't be available until late September to do this work, so hopefully before the winter, definitely before the winter, we'll get the bridge repairs done. So, I'm sorry, do I have a motion on that?
No.
I need a motion for an introduction. So...
Second.
Any further discussion? The second and final reading, Jane Wensel, as soon as we can do that. Could we do the 6th of September? We should, we have 14 days for the end of the month, another discussion. Yeah, 20 days, it'll be good. Second final reading will be 7:00 AM on September 6th, and then the 26th of September, funds will be available to get these repairs. How about Robb, please?
Councilwoman Hudson. Yes. Sandamire.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMotta.
Yes. Thank you.
Two non-agenda?
Oh yeah, there is, thank you very much. There's two non-agenda items, first, I need a motion to authorize me to advertise a position of laborer, you know, DPW, to replace our retired foreman. Obviously, this would be a much lower placement than a retiring, starting as a laborer. And remember, this is part, we put it off till the end of the year, because budget-wise, we can really quick do the full 12 months. So we'd be looking to hire, you know, some point in September to cover the year, and then move an employee to the utility, where the efficiency study to, to make you that more efficient. So we're moving along there. So who makes that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? And I need a motion to accept the resignation of Helen Berger from our Environmental Commission. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
The resolution, she says here on her email, will be withheld, or resolution...
From the Environmental Commission. There wasn't a resolution. I mean, I, you know, we can save that for, you want that, we have a discussion now, or you want to go to the Environmental Commission and get the permission?
Yeah, there was a, I believe there was a piece of property that was discussed, I don't know if it went to a vote, a resolution, I don't remember being a vote resolution, but the chairman, Frank O'Reilly, brought it up with the mayor, and I think there was discussions on that not being, it being accident wet. So...
But it was never a formal resolution.
Yeah.
The Environmental Commission asked the chairman to explore the possibility of acquiring six acres of human land that the borough just foreclosed on from the tax. And the chairman approached me, and I said, why would we spend a penny, detransferers, attorneys, title searches, and all of this, when it's 100% wet? It's never going to be developed, it's entirely 100% wetness. And that's, she was upset that it wasn't a formal resolution brought by the chairperson to the planning board, which, again, I don't know, I don't believe was the true direction of the commission, but there's other issues. I'm attending the next Environmental Commission with Tony, our easel, two areas of things that I think were, were okay, and I just think I'll save the rest. No matter. Good?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion for late call to comment, please?
So moved.
Anyone wishing to speak, please come on up, state your name and address for the record. Where are you, Brew? Hey, the ceiling's going to fall down. How are you?
I like this, I will do that.
So I say the ceiling's going to fall down.
Well, as well, to know the gentleman, sir, together on the council, beginning the process 2001, when the state master plan was formulated, you know, for the public hearings, and from that, keep the island, like, sir, and again, your actions on federal health, speaking mountains, the direction that you want to take this down forward in the future, that project has been so bad, the people that spoke against this project in Arizona, the ship sailed, should have happened a few thousand years ago. The ship didn't put in high these hands, tried to try and get it in, but it failed. So basically, now the project is fair game, the game has changed, and you've done the responsible thing, you interacted with the council, you can solve that problem. You're looking ahead, and the best thing just to go off, you should preach in every word.
Thank you very much. All I can say is, where are we last week?
I was up on top of there.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Anything else? Seeing no motion to closing, so moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have one matter, no, I was wrong, it was not. We have one matter of executive session, and in consideration of the executive session this will be given public opportunity to speak. Due by schedule, September 6th, reminder September 11, 9/11 walk, and September 20th is our second September meeting. I need a motion to enter into executive session, who makes that, please?
So moved.
At 7:41, all in...
We will have, we will have action afterwards.
We will have action afterwards. 7:41, we are in exact, take a vitamin recess. One item, I need a motion for the bills list.
So moved.
I'm sorry?
8.12.
8.12. Moved by Councilman Mon, who makes that?
No.
Rich? Second, any further discussion? All in favor, please?
Councilwoman Sandamire.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes, with the exception of the tri-state... Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Any motion to your chair? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Casual, please?